So you have to be cognizant of what you do.
Oh, okay.
To me, that's also...
I visited with him on Friday afternoon. I visited with him on Friday afternoon.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hey.
Are you feeling better?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
It was just a precaution. I'm not sick. Did you get the time?
Yeah. A little bit of a sparse turn up though. The two guest speakers for AG and...
Yeah, no, they're all ours.
No, sorry.
Yeah, but so you did the best you could. I mean, it was the decision of the district on whether they want to postpone it. She didn't want to postpone it. And there you go. But she did good. She raised a lot of money. She was purposeful.
That's first of all, you're supposed to get called the public.
Good. Couldn't be better.
You can get called to the public on that.
AV room has joined the conference.
And then let me go make sure everybody's online, of course.
The following. Three participants are in the conference.
Byron Stewart.
AV room.
Supervisor Johnson.
Has joined the conference.
Byron Stewart.
Has left the conference.
I don't know if Byron will stay on, but Buster's on. Well, you know, I'm surprised. Bull now. I don't know where he went. I'm not gonna...
He's scared. He's scared.
Whatever you want to do. You're the chairman.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's March sixteenth, 2020. And we'll begin this morning with the call to order with the invocation led by our clerk of the board and pledge of allegiance. If you'll stand, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here today. We ask that you keep our families, friends, and coworkers safe and healthy. May you guide our meeting so that it is full of productivity, encourage the board to engage in meaningful discussion, and nurture the bonds of our communities with our decisions. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Remove your hats and join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431. At this time, I'll call for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on April the sixth, 2020, at nine a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 and four to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval in this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go to the official business to come before the board. First item, discussion of possible action to receive an update and obtain legal advice from the county attorney's office regarding pending or contemplated liability claims related to legal actions involving Mohawney County.
No further. Have nothing else to report to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any committee or legislative reports? Supervisor Johnson, we'll begin with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. NACO Information Technology Standing Committee had their meeting at the conference. Going to start off with Rita Reynolds, NACO's chief technology officer, who gave an overview of NACO's new county tech exchange online portal. The portal is designed to connect county IT directors, CIOs, CISOs, and other IT leadership to improve their overall technology infrastructure. The portal will provide a library of technology policies, job descriptions, request for proposals, best practices, and toolkits. Webinars will also be presented from the federal, state, and local communities, along with surveys that will garner county feedback on technology opportunities such as technology software and services aggregate agreements. Ms. Reynolds went on to address the challenges arising with the .gov domain effort. She brought up challenges that can occur once a government entity switches to using a .gov domain, such as additional regulations that accompany the use of the .gov, like no political statements, no commercial advertising, et cetera. The domain can be suspended if out of compliance, which could obviously affect our operations. The effect will change on the other tourism applications, email addresses, and rebranding costs and challenges. Another concern was the $400 per year cost of the use of the .gov domain, while not a large amount of the yearly cost that must be paid. On a positive note, it does not give the end user the assurance... It does give the end user the insurance that they are on an actual government site. It prevents people from going to fabricated websites, although there may be some challenges associated with these changes. Government entities are moving forward to use the .gov domain. Terry Tanaka, the co-executive director for the Center for Digital Government, gave a presentation on innovation and technology. She reported that one in five Americans will be able to retire by 2030, which will change the type of employee who will be taking these jobs. The vision for the next ten years is no status quo. It is future-forward, meaning as technology continues to change or evolve, employee jobs will continuously change as computer programs change. As of right now, the ratio of employee to computer programs doing the bulk of work is about seventy to thirty. By 2035, that is projected to be about fifty-fifty. This means that artificial intelligence programs will begin replacing help desk employees and such job titles that anonymous systems manager, cyber chief, risk manager, digital labor manager will become necessary to run the new programming that will emerge in the future. Another dynamic that will progressively change is the use of drones in law enforcement versus helicopters and possible autonomous vehicles that will replace regular fleet vehicles. Along with these changes will be the need to address cybersecurity needs that will extend to the use of drones, autonomous vehicles, which could become very costly if additional state mandates are leveraged to ensure safety in these areas. For more information on replacement of jobs by computers, you can visit www.willrobots-takemyjob.com. Although the future of information technology is exciting, there will be many things to consider and implement to ensure government and citizens' data is protected. We also had the public lands meeting. I don't know if Supervisor Watson wants to handle that, or I can do it.
Go ahead. You're on a roll, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, sir. The first half of the public lands meeting covered all of one session, and part of another was devoted to interim resolutions on policy. Interim resolutions are categorized as emergency and remain in effect until the annual meeting in July, where they are acted upon again to become permanent or dropped. The following were acted upon. Forest Service workforce and capacity report was adopted, aimed at restaffing professional positions to carry out non-fire programs. Two, support for the proposed NEPA regulations issued by the CEO. It passed. Use of targeted grazing for fuels management. That passed. Support of flexibility in elections related to the Secured Rural School Act. That passed. Supporting stopping the five percent annual withdrawal of SRS payments. Passed. Increasing timber harvest in National Forest System to nineteen eighty-seven levels, amended to be sustainable level, and adding good neighbor and stewardship. Passed as amended, but not unanimous. Moratorium on wilderness designations after extensive discussion and debate on impacts to counties of jurisdiction and adjacent counties outside the proposed designation, but amended that proposed. Wilderness have the agreement of local elected officials from the county of jurisdiction. It passed as amended, but not unanimous. Supporting no net loss of access to federal lands after discussion as to meaning and intent. The resolution was pulled. Supporting no net increases in federal land ownership after extensive discussion regarding private property rights and whether to involve county officials in decisions on property sales that would impact private landowners. The resolution was amended to simply establish a recommendation that the federal agency release federal land for private sale to offset the private land loss to tax base. Passed as amended, but not unanimous. Urging the Secretaries of Agriculture and of Interior to get moving on reinstating resource advisory councils and clear nominations for membership. Passed on consent. Urging inclusion of PILT and SRS funding in the president's annual budget. Passed on consent. Across-committee resolution from the Environmental Energy and Land Use Committee to decrease or eliminate methane emissions from oil and gas wells on federal land. After discussion on both, the practicality of capping or piping and the economics of the action being requested, the committee voted to oppose the passage. This motion was made to oppose. A yes vote supported opposition. Presentations. Jeff Rubin from the Office of Wildland Fire, who coordinates with the Wildlife Fire Council, present the program which now amounts to $1 billion, interfaces with state programs in the firefighting community, is attempting to provide a common language across all fire agencies and to standardize all operational protocols. There are sixty-five thousand wildland fires annually. Ninety-eight percent are suppressed the first day. In 2016, set the stage for active management, which means reduce fuels and hazards. Department of Interior agencies are meeting targets. Cohesive strategy is helping to shift the gears. Rick Stein of the Forest Service Retired Association presented the work of the task force on capacity. This manifested in Resolution One that we went over, in training and hiring employees with skills associated with forest restoration, changing workforce composition, streamlining hiring process, reduce or eliminate administrative burdens on professional employees to provide better focus on on-the-ground work, increasing hiring, delegate authority to field units that have responsibility for results, and implement actions previously proposed by the retirees association. Mark Haggerty of Headwaters spoke about work his organization had done on PILT and SRS payments. The focus of his presentation was the development of an endowment fund to permanently fund SRS. Most people now recognize timber harvest will never yield the receipts that were generated in the nineteen eighties. In many cases, the infrastructure is gone. The previously handled timber harvest, PILT was designed to work in concert with timber receipts. This proposed endowment program is intended to invest receipts until they're a sufficient size to make SRS payments to counties without appropriation. It would be permanent. While there is debate about funding sources, whether to do from single appropriation of five to seven billion or use annual receipts until funded. Small County Parity Act is moving forward to provide better PILT payments to counties below 5,000 population. Senate Bill 2108 and... Senate Bill 2108 and House Bill 3716 are the bills providing for the change. James Hubbard, the undersecretary of Agriculture for Natural Resources and Environment, spoke. He has both a federal service and NRCS under his purview. He spoke of the USDA push for active management. The Fish and Wildlife has increased timber, Forest Service has increased timber harvest to 3.3 billion board feet last year, the highest since the 80s, though still far less. The secretary and he are promoting increased cooperation with states and seeking state input into programs. USDA has signed 12 agreements, which include both timber harvest and fuels management. They're trying to improve post-fire actions and restoration. They emphasize in customer service. They fully support the proposed NEPA reforms with increases in category exclusions. Ariella Shipwith, Director of Fish and Wildlife, spoke regarding the programs in the Endangered Species Act. She stated her efforts were aimed at building trust between the agency and the public. Conservation is about people. She is encouraging work with landowners and communities and applying both science and common sense. Fish and Wildlife Services actively slashed regulations per the administration's goals. She emphasized timely review of projects such as Section 7 consultations. Recovery is the primary purpose of the ESA, and the agency is also promoting efforts at habitat improvement. She is trying to provide regulatory predictability. She expressed a wish that the NGOs who constantly sue, the agency would spend their efforts on the species they care about instead of spending the money on lawyers and litigation. Much of the thoughts on collaborative conservation is to return management to the states. She advocates a robust collaborative process in management. Her bottom line is that hunting and fishing are important outdoor activities, and outdoor activities create jobs. Partnerships are required. Jonathan Shuffield, the NACO deputy director who handles the federal land issues, summarized legislative efforts. The FY 2020 appropriations had $49 billion increase, and 2021 looks to be at similar level. Full funding of PILT was provided. Permanent PILT authority is being sought under HR 3043. Ten-year mandatory funding is being sought under Senate Bill 2480. Secure rural schools is funded, but only for two years, and the 5% rollback remains. Senate Bill 1643 would provide a fix and also encourage timber production, but it's going to be a tough one to get through. Deferred maintenance is of great concern, but nothing ever gets passed to address it. There is now a $19 billion backlog, mostly in National Park Service units. Senate Bill 500 and HR 1225 are intended to address the problem. Renewable energy permitting and management with revenue sharing to states and counties is contained in HR 3792 and Senate 2666. We ask if the revenue sharing was exempted from PILT calculations. This is something that's been raised before. My concern is that if it's passed, counties would get revenue sharing and then be docked a like amount from their PILT payment. Comment on NEPA regulations are due March 10th. Grazing regulation comment is due March 6th. That's all, unless you want me to go on to WIR, Gary.
Okay, thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Gould?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson, for your very detailed account of everything that happened at NACO. I can add that in our committee meeting with EELU, the Environmental Energy and Land Use Committee, concerning the flaring resolution, that became quite a heated discussion and took up most of the morning of that group. It was a rather weak resolution and was defeated, and was glad defeated in the committee the whole. As for the rest of the NACO conference, I'd like to report that I met with the Director of Bureau of Reclamation, Ms. Brenda Berman, on Tuesday, the March 3rd, with Patrick Cunningham, our lobbyist. And we went over the fourth priority, Colorado River water, 164,000 acre feet that have been set aside for the river communities. We also presented her with resolutions from Yuma, La Paz, Mojave County, and the County Supervisors Association, as with all cities that are concerned with the Colorado River area. She was very receptive to talking to us. We would take those items under advisement, and so I think we ended up with a very good meeting. And with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Good morning. I too was at NACO. Thank you for those reports. My focus is on our homelessness and mental health issues here in the county. There were many sessions on that. I got some good information and brought back information, which I will make available to the board and to the public. I also met with the Office of National Drug Control Policy, which is where the drug czar lives, and they have been very helpful. Actually, I've been speaking to them for probably a half a year now about things for rural areas, what they can do, resources that are available, so I'll be working closely with them too. We heard from a lot of people in the federal government, including President Trump himself, who is his usual talkative self. And I met with Senator McSally and Congressman Gosar. Gary and I actually had dinner with him, and that was very interesting. So I just want you to know that all the, our elected officials, our delegations, the federal and even the state, are with us on all of these issues going forward. And with that, I'm the LPC, Legislative Liaison with the state, and I had some kind of report today, but things have been changing drastically, as we all know, with the state. So I asked our state representative Leo Biassucci to give me an update of what's going on, and he sent this to me and asked me to read this. I'm writing this email today to share with you the progress of the state budget. The last few weeks have been very promising in regards to the budget. We had an emphasis on infrastructure to repair our roads. We secured funding to replenish SLIF. We proposed more tax cuts for our hard-working citizens, and we put more money towards our DPS, correctional officers, schools, and veterans. Just weeks ago, we were excited about having record revenues, but unfortunately, all of that has changed over the last few days. As you all know, we are faced with a crisis, and now we must concentrate on protecting the public against a possible pandemic. I am proud to be part of the legislature that made it a priority to put money away in our savings, putting $1 billion into our rainy day fund last year for unforeseen events like the coronavirus. Just last week, we at the legislature approved $50 million from our rainy day fund to be used to help our state tackle the coronavirus. The safety and well-being of our constituents comes first, and right now, that is what we are focusing on. On another note, the federal government, the Trump administration, has allotted $50 billion to, for the economic impact of this virus. They are now working on how it's going to be distributed. Arizona will get some, just how much, we don't know. That being said, we are working on passing, so right now, all that I just read you before about what they're doing is in the rearview window. Because we're working on passing a baseline-only budget at the Capitol that will allow us to provide funding for necessary items. This will allow the state to continue to operate and for us to address the supplement items once we get past the situation we are faced with. The most important thing right now is to keep our vital programs funded so that we can continue to run our state efficiently. We are committed to make sure you are all protected in times like this, and I'm confident we will all get through this together. I want to thank everyone for doing your part in protecting yourself and your family. The restrictions in place might be an inconvenience now, but I'm confident that it will be looked back on as the reason we didn't experience what Italy and China are experiencing. God bless you all, and God bless America. And I know we'll be speaking about some of these issues later on the meeting. So with that, my report is done.
Oh, thank you for that detailed report. I attended the county supervisors' executive board meeting, as well as the CSA Board of Directors meeting last month in Phoenix. I also attended the recent Fairgrounds Board meetings here locally. And as a note, kind of piggybacking on what Supervisor Angus said, I've attended the COVID-19 livestream briefing by Governor Ducey and the Arizona Department of Health webinar. Also attended the livestream briefing as we continue to closely monitor the COVID-19 outbreak. I've also participated in the Arizona Department of Health webinar with the CDD recommendations. So with that being my report, I'll turn it over to the county manager for his report, if he has one.
Madam Chairman, I have no report today, unless you'd like for me to announce the Tuesday meeting.
I think we're going to do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time for approval of the February 3rd and February 18th, 2020 Board of Supervisor Meeting minutes. Second, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go now to our call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the Board of General must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. So I do have a number of people that have signed up to speak. And as you call, as you come down, I would caution you to please distance yourself from the microphone today and speak loudly. We don't want to share any germs on that microphone. So if you just speak loudly, I think we'll be able to hear you clearly. I will call Joy Bancroft down to begin the call to the public. If you'll just state your name, and you have three minutes to speak.
May I give you a paper?
You could give it to the clerk of the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Joy Bancroft, and I live at 4682 Linden Drive in Topoc, Golden Shores. And it's nice to see you all again. I see you every month. Thank you. I appreciate your support, and Golden Shores has received from many county entities, and we have seen so many positive results. But today, what I want to bring to your attention is two properties I have shown you before, but now we're trying to get the attention of the board, we hope, and the abatement committee, because these two properties have been red-tagged and deemed uninhabitable. And they've gotten much worse. And our community hopes that sooner than later, maybe they'll be demolished. So let's see if I can bring them up for you. Bear with me here. Get it on there? Do I need to do anything? There we go. Thank you. This property was a meth house. It's been like this for eight-plus years. It's worse and worse. They're like tearing down the sightings. People are hiding out there at night. It's horrible, horrible, horrible. And another property is here, and I gave you the list of, I didn't know if I was allowed to give the addresses. This one is a property that the owner died. He had a gentleman there, and he decided to stay with no one's permission, started gathering all kinds of motor vehicles, motor cars, motor homes. And now, all of these have been totally broken into. The windows are busted open. The place is just horrible, horrible. It's horrendous thing, I can't even begin to tell you. So these properties, both of them have very long stories with horrendous sight to see every day, and we appreciate whatever can be done, because we're just waiting for these to be hopefully demolished. And Tim Walsh, I hope that you guys can do something. I'll give you the list. On a different note, I wanted to shout out to, if there's anybody here from the Library District, we have a librarian by the name of Dick Gephardt. He is a wonderful guy, is deciding to leave, and we're kind of hoping somebody can get him to stay. This community loves him. He's doubled the library attendance, and please, you know, somebody from the district, please try to get him to stay. And shout out to Mr. Sheriff Schuster and the officers that came to the community for the coffee with the boss, with the coffee with the group, and it was outstanding. It was awesome. Thank you very much always for listening to me.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Dwayne Engness. E-N-G-N-E-S-S. Dwayne, are you here? Okay, Dwayne has apparently left the building. The next person is, our men stands.
If you could just pronounce your name correctly for me. We still have the same problem in our neighborhood, like you have in Topoc. 4360 Infantry Road got raided by the county a couple weeks ago. The house got condemned. It's red-tagged. People are still living there, and on top of it, they have young children living there now, too. It's getting out of hand. Everybody who got kicked off of that 4360 Infantry, they moved to the Matusak property on 4349 Cavalry Road. All the trailers, all the motor homes, everything. And we have motor homes pop up just about every property up and down Cavalry Road. Well, something needs to be done, and we have increased burglaries. You know, people coming all night long, in, out, every five minutes. And then, on a good note, I would like to thank Supervisor Gould for contacting High Desert Heat for the next desert cleanup. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Howard Noble. If you could just give us your name. You've got three minutes to speak.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Howard Noble. I live at 1258 South Cordez Road in Golden Valley. I have been a member of the association at the Fairgrounds for at least 15 years now, and I'm very concerned with the way things are going there with the actions of the elected board out there. And you're going to hear more about this shortly, but I would encourage you to take this seriously, as it is really getting out of hand. The chairwoman was there at a meeting, and I think she understands what's going on, but some action needs to be taken on your part, because it is the Mojave County Fairgrounds. And even though the association leases the property from you, it contains your name, and so the public would associate what goes on there with what you folks can do. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Olson. And Jerry Rogers, you'll be next. Good morning. Just state your name, and you've got three minutes.
My name is Linda Olson. I live here in Kingman, Arizona. I want to let you know, you're going to be hearing, as Howard said, more information about the Mojave County Fair Association and Mojave County Fair Board. I want you to know that I agree entirely with what's being presented. I also would like to add, for your consideration, that currently, none of the officers of the Fair Board, according to the bylaws presently in existence, meet the criteria to be on that board. So I hope you will listen closely to what is going to be presented to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Engel, you'll be following Jerry. Jerry, just repeat your name for the record.
My name is Jerry Gores-Rogers, and I thank you, the board, and Madam Chair, for letting me address you. I've been a member of the Mojave County Fairgrounds Association. I am not a member at this time. I was the chair of the Mojave County Fair. I've been on the- I've been on the Board, and I really don't like what's going on. If you go to a Fair Board meeting, it is ran not as a meeting should be ran. I brought members from our 4-H Group, youth members, to show them, our new presidents and vice presidents of our 4-H Group, how a Board member, how a Board meeting should be ran. And it was not ran anything close, and I was very embarrassed for that Board. Motions were made, motions were seconded, motions were ignored. The bylaws were not followed. Three of the new members of the Board weren't elected according to the bylaws. And I hope you guys can look into it, because there's lots going on there that shouldn't be. And I thank you for your time. I'm not going to repeat anything else.
Just repeat your name for us, please.
My name is Stephanie Engel. I reside here in Kingman, Arizona. I'm presenting today on behalf of the Mojave County Fair Association, as a member of that organization. Madam Chair Bishop and members of the Board, I would like to spend the next few minutes bringing to your attention a concern that, if not corrected immediately, may lead to a huge public relations nightmare and potential litigation for Mojave County and this Board of Supervisors. The concern surrounds the Mojave County Fair Association, the private nonprofit corporation that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors has contracted with to maintain and manage the Mojave County Fairgrounds, lease the facilities for other activities, and organize its two signature events, the Home and Garden Show, and most importantly, the Mojave County Fair. Both of these events, as well as the public's perception of the integrity of Mojave County itself, are currently in jeopardy. In jeopardy because of the actions of the Mojave County Fair Association Board has taken in recent months in direct violation of its own bylaws. I am confident that, as Supervisors, you understand the importance of following the law, as well as your own policies and procedures. This meeting here today, for example, is following Robert's Rules of Order, universally considered the standard under which meetings are to be run. Unfortunately, the current state of the Mojave County Fair Association is far from orderly. For the past several months, the Mojave County Fair Association has been operating with a non-member knowingly acting illegally as its chairperson. If you could direct your attention to the packet of information that was provided to you before this meeting, at the top of Page 2 of nine of the bylaws of the Mojave County Fair Association dated March 2010. These were the bylaws in effect on September 27th of last year. The importance of that date will be made shortly. The last line of Section 2 is critical. Cessation of registered voter status in Mojave County, Arizona shall automatically terminate a membership. As is typical for most organizations, if one is not a member of the Mojave County Fair Association, then one cannot be on the Board of Directors or hold any position of authority within that association. Yet, that is exactly what is currently the case in the Mojave County Fair Association, and what is of grave concern. If you could direct your attention to the single sheet that was provided to you, this is a confirmation of Mojave County registered voter status of the Board members of the Mojave County Fair Association. Please note the date of Ramona Ald's registration was canceled September 27th of 2019. By its own bylaws, Ms. Ald's membership in the Mojave County Fair Association was terminated on that date, and since she was no longer a member, she had no business continuing to conduct business on the Board, let alone sit as the Chair of that Board. While they have been operating with an illegal Board Chairman, the Mojave County Fair Association held its annual membership meeting, where there were three open seats on the Board to be elected. There seems to be quite a lot of questions surrounding whether there was actually three or four candidates running for those positions. We'll have to let your investigation sort that out. Regardless, Illegal Chair Ald proclaimed the three candidates as elected without holding an actual vote, in violation of Mojave County Fair Association bylaws, which had been amended just days before that meeting to require such a vote. A copy of those amended bylaws has also been provided to you. See Page 4, Article 5, Section 2 of the bylaws, revised January 2010.
Thank you very much. Cliff Engel, you'll be the next and final speaker.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Cliff Engel. I also live here in Kingman, Arizona. To continue with what Mrs. Engel had started, last month, the Mojave County Fair Association held its monthly business meeting to elect Board Officers. Questions were raised during that meeting concerning the legality of the newly-elected Board Members. One Board Member made a motion to suspend the remainder of the meeting's agenda simply until such time that those Board Members' elections could be validated. His motion received a second. Normally, just as you would hear in one of your own meetings, discussion would ensue, and a vote would be taken on that motion. But not at this meeting. Illegal Chair Ald refused to take any action on the motion, in violation of Robert's Rules of Order, instead consistently gaveling the Board Member down, saying, quote, "I am moving forward with my agenda." So as you might imagine, a number of the questionably-elected Mojave County Fair Association Board Members were subsequently elected as Officers. All the while, the general membership, several in the audience today, is sitting in the audience, justifiably grumbling about things being railroaded by the Mojave County Fair Association Board, a Board which is supposed to be serving the best interests of the citizens of Mojave County. One of the Board Members got fed up enough to actually resign at the meeting, because he did not want to be part of all of this nonsense. And the Board Member who attempted to legally and civilly question all of this? Well, for his trouble, Illegal Chair Ald conducted a due process hearing last week for alleged misconduct, laughably claiming that he was creating a hostile work environment, the result of which was the revocation of his Mojave County Fair Association membership, which of course was a de facto removal from the Board. How convenient. It seems strangely ironic that she was so eager to follow the very same bylaws to persecute a differing opinion, that she refused to follow those same bylaws by remaining as the Illegal Board Chairperson. So much for democracy in action. So why should you care about any of this? Well, Mojave County, supervised by you, and the Mojave County Fair Association are specifically linked by name. You are in business with them. Like it or not, as far as the public is concerned, what that Board does is a reflection on this Board. You aren't going to be able to convince people otherwise. So what you do next is critical. You can choose to do nothing, in which case, you'll be sending a message to the voters that you condone this type of irresponsible governance, and the public will likely perceive that this Board is just as likely to break its own rules when it's convenient to do so, as that Board has demonstrated. Or, you can direct the Mojave County Attorney's Office to conduct an investigation of the Mojave County Fair Association Board and its activities over the past several months, in order to get ahead of the wave of collateral negative publicity. Perhaps the results of that investigation, which might lead to legal proceedings, would be sufficient enough to convince the Mojave County Fair Association Board to rethink its position, declare all official actions taken by its Illegal Chairperson null and void, and start over with a new Fair Board election, so that it can get on with the business of putting on a Mojave County Fair that we can all be proud of. It is my sincere hope that you will decide in favor of democracy and the best interest of your shared constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. And Mr. Esplin, if you could look into the attachments that's been provided, I'd appreciate it. Okay, I'll now close the call to the public, and we'll go on to presentations by the Friends of the Mojave County Animal Shelter.
I have a proclamation.
The proclamation in the agenda follows.
I just said, this is a little.
Okay. Sorry. Does it matter, Madam Clerk?
I just didn't want to get it.
Okay.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Friends of Mojave County Animal Shelter were very pleased to present the Board with a check for $3,000. The money was raised by our generous community. We put out a need, and the community was very receptive, and we have $3,000 to present to you for the needs of the animals at the shelter.
Very good. Thank you. Did you want to take a photograph?
Yes, please.
All right. I think that's worthy of a photograph. Such dedication and hard work, thank you very, very much, from myself and for my poodle named Alfred. Okay, we now have a proclamation, and I'll go ahead and read that proclamation. It's National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 19th, 2020 to April 25th, 2020. Whereas Victims Rights Movement has mandated in the passage of laws that administer rights for victims of crimes, whereas November 6th, 1990, the Arizona Constitution was amended to include rights for victims of crime. Whereas in 1990, the Mojave County Attorney's Office established the Victim Witness Program to ensure the rights of victims be protected. Whereas Victims Rights Advocates serve victims by advising them of their rights, available resources, and explaining the criminal justice system. Whereas the Mojave County Victim Witness Program encourages victims to find autonomy, empowerment, and sense of hope for their future. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to acknowledge the Victims Rights Movement and the accomplishments the survivors have made. Now, therefore, we, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 19th, 2020 to April 25th, 2020, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And along with the Mojave County Victims Rights Program, we are dedicated to empowering victims of crimes, honoring the rights of victims, and upholding the belief that all people should be able to live in a safe environment, which is free from fear, violence, and intimidation. Executed this 16th day of March, 2020. And we'll get this signed by each one of the individual Supervisors.
Madam Chairman, we'll need the Board to vote. It's to approve a proclamation, so you'll need to ask for a vote on it.
Okay, so I'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes, and we do have our proclamation. Okay, we'll go on to the Board of Supervisors' Consent Agenda. The following items listed under the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items, unless a Board Member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything to remove?
54.
Okay, Supervisor Gould, anything?
None today, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing today.
And Supervisor Watson?
43.
Okay, and I will remove 34 and 57. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, minus items 23, 34, 54, and 57.
So moved.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, yes. Did I miss one?
I think you imposed 23 for 43.
Guess I need a amended motion to include item 43 as well.
How about if you repeat the motion?
Okay, it was item 43, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, minus items, let me see if I get this right, 23, 34, 43, 54, and 57.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Supervisor Watson, item number 23, a proven Siena Award of Contract Number 20-B-03, River City Refuge Services to Republic Services Incorporated.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop, but I think maybe you misheard me. The item that I was wanting to pull is item number 43, but I'll be happy to make a motion to approve item number 23.
Oh, okay. That was my confusion. I misunderstood you. So we have a, we have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So now, we'll go on to item 34. Okay, I remove this item for discussion. This is authorized Public Works Director to approve the application for a special event, permit within the Mojave County Rightofway to stage the 35th Annual Loyalty Day Parade, April 18th, 2020. So I pull this because of the situation with the coronavirus, and I would like to open that to discussion, to see whether or not we want to approve special events such as these. Madam Chair? Supervisor Angus?
I think we should go ahead and approve things, because we don't know how long this is going to be. And let's say, two weeks goes, and they lift it, then everything that's been scheduled, it's just going to, it's just going to make it even, I think, more confusing and hard to deal with, and it's going to be anyway. I mean, if the mandate is not to have gatherings, at that point, they're not going to have a gathering. What's the difference how, you know, if they're going to get their permit or not? I just think we should err on the side of our constituents.
Okay, thank you for that. It was recommended by the risk management and our Health Department that we not approve these type permits for now, so.
Madam Chairman.
Further discussion, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, this is an outdoor event. The likelihood of spread of disease in an outdoor event is extremely less than an indoor event. And frankly, I'm just not comfortable with the way that the CDC has handled this, and to essentially lock the entire country down because they can't put a test out correctly, I think is just, and it's antithetical to the freedom of the United States. So I would like to see this event go ahead and be approved.
Supervisor Watson?
I only have one caveat. Maybe on the applications for special permits, that we add "use common sense." But I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we want to hear from our Public Health Director? Denise, can you give us a few comments before I call for the vote?
I can. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Really, what we're following is CDC's guidance and ADHS. They are recommending that, for the next two months, that we not permit, or at least not conduct, events that are more than 50 people. And where we're coming from, I can tell you, is that we know we have a higher-risk population due to the number of older folks in our communities. And this is a strong point to be made, is that when we're talking about other communities with younger populations, it's not as much of an issue. But we do realize that with the number of older folks in our community, and those that have underlying health issues, it won't take much to begin to see a spread in the diseases. As a matter of fact, I think we can all pretty fully admit that it's probably already in our community, and it's just not been tested yet. I mean, testing is occurring, but in terms of having that person tested, where we start seeing that ball rolling, I think we just haven't seen that yet. So for us, it is a precautionary method.
Okay, any questions?
I think something like this, that is a month away, we don't know what's going to happen. In two weeks, maybe nothing, and then everything's going to be lifted. So, you know, I don't see any harm in approving it. And, you know, everyone's going to be using some of their common sense. If it gets worse, then we'll, you know, we'll mandate it. But having the permit doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to, they're going to be able to have it at that point. But I think if we start doing this, we're going to be behind, and it's just going to create a bigger problem than we already have.
Well, is there, is there a way to, well, and this would go to the legal side of things, I suppose, if we start to see cases in our community, is there a way to cancel this permit at that point? So we reduce the spread? Or once we permit it, is it good to go? And nothing we can say or do would stop that event from moving forward?
Can you?
Because, understanding that literally, we don't know, and I agree, we don't have any positive cases in our community at this moment in time, and we always kind of condition that, but knowing that there- that, but knowing that there's a strong possibility that we'd like to have something in place, I suppose, to know that we could alter that plan.
Can I ask? Mr. Espin, can you advise us, if we approve this, can we put a rider on it, you know, say?
Unless we change our mind.
Unless we change our mind.
So let me make sure we're clear. We are not endorsing this event. Mojave County is not saying this is the Mojave Countyan event. It is not. This is not a Mojave County event. I need to make sure that, well, aware of that. This is an event put on by an organization. I don't know the name of the organization, but it's something Golden Shores Organization at some point, somebody is putting on this event. It is not our event. Secondly, is all we're permitting is, we're permitting this organization to allow an event to occur in the Mojave County right-aways. So it's not like we're putting our stamp of approval, "Go for it, you should do this." We're not telling them that. That's not the message that this is conveying. The one thing that I would suggest, and the one thing I worry about, is if you do award the application, if you grant the application, if you approve the application and then pull it later, there is some kind of argument of what we call detrimental reliance. They're relying upon being authorized to do this. So the moment we say, "Yep, you can do it," they could put things in motion to get people to come, sign contracts, have people pay out money so that they can come, and then suddenly, if you pull the rug out from them, then Mojave County, they may have some argument that we should reimburse them for something for that. Now, those are the worst-case scenarios and the things that, you know, we as lawyers think about and worry about and keep us up at night. But that's just something I would caution you about of suddenly saying, "Well, grant the application," and then suddenly pull the rug out from them after they have detrimentally relied upon us. So if you're going to approve the recommendation, or, excuse me, if you're going to approve the application, then I would recommend not pulling it out from under them later on. But things are changing every day, and you may need to. So what I would suggest is you could approve this and then say, but also on the condition that we may come back at a public meeting and revoke the application at a later date. I think you could do that in this motion if you wish to add that to it. That way, they know that this is conditional upon everything changing and so forth. So I would do something like that is what my recommendation is, if you wish to approve it. I think what Denise is looking at is, from a health perspective, that this is not a good idea at this time, and that's why they're suggesting that you not approve it. And that'd be totally reasonable on your part to not approve it either.
If I could bring up one more thing. On one hand, we're asking older adults to exercise that social distancing, and already exercised that. And so the mixed message is, then we hold an event even outside, but still people in closer proximity than six feet. And we're sort of saying that's okay.
So if I could just add a personal touch to this, Saturday, I did attend the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Chloride, and it had about half of the typical people in attendance, and we were still shoulder to shoulder on the sidewalks as we watched the floats and the vehicles travel by. And there were food vendors, and the restaurants were open, and everything that goes along with having a good time at a little small community.
Right, 'cause that's what we do.
Celebration like that.
Absolutely.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
This event is approximately a month from now. And I'm sure that if we give approval to this event and something dramatically changes between now and then, that the promoters of this event are not going to go forward with the event. It's an important event to them, but it's not so important that they're gonna risk people's lives and safety. They won't hold the event if we come back and tell them, "You know what? This is a really bad idea because this has happened, and we actually have some proof that this is gonna happen." I'm sure that they're not gonna hold the event. Rather than the iron-fisted government, we need to trust our people to do what's right.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
And I will vote opposed on that, too. So it's three to two, and it does pass.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to item forty-three. This was pulled by Supervisor Johnson. Accept the equipment grant from the Constable Ethics Standards and Training Board for $3,299.99 to be used by a laptop to be used by the Serbat Constable.
I have comments on it, Madam Chair.
Chairman Bishop, that was Supervisor Watson. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Thank you. Just have a question. It appears to me that $3,299.99 might be one fantastic computer. Just wondering if the constables are... Yes, Mr. Cullison, Constable Cullison, would you?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, and there wasn't any backup information to...
Well, the only thing that brings me mind, I've been looking for one myself, and about a thousand dollars buys you a pretty nice one.
Mine was $200.
Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, when I first went out to look for this, and I went to procurement to find a computer, as I get older, my eyes are getting worse. That computer has a 17-inch screen, and since I'd be using it a lot for the job, for instance, in my vehicle when I'm out. The main reason for the laptop is, and I'm just gonna give an example, one time what happened, I was out in Dolan Springs to serve some documents. The judge didn't sign those documents. I had to come back into town, get the documents after I was almost already there, get those documents, go back out. While I was back out, I got orders for order protection. Now, with technology, we could do everything in our vehicles. A lot of other constables throughout the state are doing stuff through their vehicles. Those documents could be sent to me, I could print them. And so it's just, I wanted something that was gonna be convenient enough for my eyes and for, you know, for the job to get it done. So that was the main reason for it. Is there cheaper ones? Yeah, but they're a lot smaller.
Well, I can certainly appreciate your desire to serve the public.
I do serve the public.
But what I might recommend is just getting an old-fashioned pair of glasses.
I have those, too, sir. Thank you.
But I've got no problem authorizing the expenditure up to your required amount, but I do question, is that the most expensive?
No, sir. No.
I know it's not the cheapest.
Well, I went through it with the procurement, I went through it with the Ethics Board. They approved it, sir, and so that's what I went with, but...
Well, thank you. It's technically not Mojave County's money, but...
Right. I'm just curious, do all five constables, are they getting these computers, or are you the only one?
I'm the only one at this point, not to say that others won't. Everything's changing, like with order protection, AZ Point now, the way things are being done is, we don't get the documents like we used to get them through the clerks of the courts. We're getting emailed that we have documents. Then we have to go out online through a portal, get those documents, print them, and go out and serve. So as they even put it in our training, it's almost best to have a system where you could print stuff from your vehicle to go out and serve, instead of having to run back and forth. Actually, be saving county money by not having to run back and forth to my office all the time to get documents.
Okay. This is gonna sound like a silly question, but with your eyesight, do you have a valid driver's license?
Of course I do. And I just had my eyes tested, thank you.
I know, but because you brought that up, I felt like I just needed to clarify that for the public, so thank you.
Chairman, I have another question. Constable, are all the vehicles that Mojave County Sheriff's Department uses, are they gonna be required to switch over to a system like this? Are we looking at 50 vehicles that are gonna require $3,500?
Actually, their computers in the sheriff's vehicles and in the PD are almost as expensive. They're not the same. They're different, but they are almost, you could run over them with a truck. Those computers are way different, you can't even compare them.
My question is, will it be required for most or all of law enforcement to have the ability to be able to print inside their vehicle for those documents?
I don't know. I can't answer that on...
Okay, I just thought maybe my... Appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Printing in a vehicle is not really that big of a deal anymore like it once was. It's, you can get a printer that'll print in your car for $100. So it's not as giant of a deal as it once was.
Okay.
And you can't really do it with a touchscreen. You know, you can imagine Constable Cullison going to the front door to serve something, and he's gotta carry the laptop to have them digitally sign the thing. It gets a lot better for him to carry a piece of paper up there. You know, a lot of times, they're not happy to see Constable Cullison, even though I like it. Sometimes they're unhappy, so you really don't wanna do it that way. So it's good that it would have the ability to print in the car. Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't see anywhere where we had worked with IT Department on this. Can we make sure that this is, everything runs through our IT Department on the...
Okay, as the pre-qualifications for me to fill out for the grant, it basically tells me to go to procurement to find something that is gonna be suitable. So I followed the guidelines of the Standards and Ethics Board to do this. Nowhere does it say that I need to go to IT, but if that was a prerequisite, I would have more than happily have done that.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Constable Cullison. But I think we need to make sure that IT is involved because that's where a lot of your programs and stuff are licensed through, because we have licensing requirements also.
Okay, I agree. We need to make sure that everything's compatible and confirm that constables throughout the state of Arizona are going to this new system so that we kind of have a handle on what the other four constables are gonna be coming to us for. If the grant money's not available, are they gonna be coming and wanting that kind of money from our general fund? Any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Constable for the purchase of a laptop after consulting with the IT Department.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item would be item number fifty-four. Authorize staff to implement special programs at the Mojave County Animal Shelter in order to control animal populations at the shelter. So Supervisor Johnson, I believe this one was yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't see anything in the backup what these special programs were.
Okay, we have Yvonne Orr coming to the podium.
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, members of the Board. In the backup, some of the programs that we included in there, we disclose that we're still in the process of developing procedures while ensuring that fees, programs, and practices are formally approved by the Board. Meanwhile, staff is looking for Board authorization to promote special programs that would essentially offer animals at reduced adoption rates, helping to control the population of the shelter. Examples of the special programs include pity parties. We have a large amount of pit bulls in the population, constant, in and out, and this is really aimed at reducing the number of pit bulls. Clear the shelter events, once again, population is at capacity, and we have to find a way to either transfer animals out or adopt them at reduced rates. Senior dog adoption, sometimes we get in very elderly dogs that can barely move, but you still don't wanna put them down, and there are people who are interested in adopting those dogs. So that's one of those programs. Harder-to-love program, excuse me, is geared at adopting out disabled animals such as tripods, deaf, blind, things of that nature. Cat specials, we propose that based on unmanageable number of cats at the shelter also. Holiday specials, when shelter, of course, is at or near capacity. So while it was on the Board Action Form, we did not include any additional backup.
Okay, thank you. So do you want to have any questions, Ms. Orr?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
If there's gonna be reductions in adoption fees and the like that could affect the budget, shouldn't that come back to us to set those fees?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, it could affect budget numbers, but I don't see that it would drastically at this time. Any time that revenues would be in jeopardy or things of that nature, we would certainly attempt to control those by other means. But meanwhile, we also have a duty to manage that population at the shelter.
And Madam Chairman, if I could, Yvonne and the staff, the shelter, and the managers doing an outstanding job, as you all know. And what we're doing is trying to ask for the flexibility from the Board to continue and to provide as good a service as we practically can. And to give an example that might be easier to understand, and I don't mean to be harsh, but to terminate the life of an animal, it costs about $10. You know, so if we failed to adopt out an animal, it would cost the county $10. If we can save that $10 and adopt out an animal at a lesser rate, we're saving money. And so this program that's being requested will actually help the budget and save money on those hard-to-adopt animals that would otherwise be costing the county the $10 to terminate their life. Anyway, thank you.
So you're saying it's gonna save the county money, perhaps, but it's also gonna save the life of many dogs that are hard to adopt?
That's correct, and I think that makes it easier to understand that explanation.
I like the idea of our shelter being as close to a no-kill shelter as we can become and still stay within our budget. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
I'm not sure about that fuzzy math there. If we're, all these animals have to be spayed and neutered and given their shots, and if we're giving a reduced rate, we're losing money on those deals.
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Johnson, we've instituted new protocols in the shelter that prior to, we're not spaying and neutering any animals unless we're certain that they're gonna be adopted out by Mojave County. Therefore, we would get our revenues back on that. If we're transferring them to other rescue organizations, we save the spay and neuter costs for them. Only when we're adopting at full cost are we actually going through with the spay and neuter. Also saves us on the vet side of the equation as well.
But what I'm getting at is, if you're doing the reduced rates, that we have no idea what the reduced rates are gonna be. I'm guessing those aren't gonna recover the costs that are associated with us, and we're saying that we're saving money when, to me, we'd be spending money. That was all.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment, if I could, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Orr and Nicole with the Animal Shelter on doing such a fantastic job in elevating our performance in that area and also bringing in new revenues, revenue streams to this endeavor. And with that, I just wanted to say thank you. Doing a great job.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, then.
I'll make that motion for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item fifty-seven, recommend the approval of an application for special event licenses for William Graciel, Long Beach Blues Society, Davis Camp, South Beach Pavilion, and Bullhead City. Event dates are May 16th through 17th, 2020. So I pull this for the same reasons, because of the concerns for the coronavirus.
Madam Chair, when the applicant brought this application in, he identified that he already has a permit through Public Works for the event. I'm not sure if that's correct. We may wanna verify that. However, this was in response to the fact he already has that permit. So just as an FYI, this isn't for the actual event, this is for a liquor license, but the event has already been sent through Public Works.
Okay, I understand. Mr. Lakowski, can you confirm that?
That's not how it's written on the...
Well, that's because this is only for the liquor license, not for the special event itself.
But it says special event.
So do they already have their special event permit? Mr. Lakowski?
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, members of the...
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, members of the board. That is correct. The Mojave County Parks issued a facilities use permit on January 28th of this year for this event to move forward. It is to occupy just the pavilion, the grassy area of Davis Camp, and the applicant represented in attendance of approximately 200 to 300 event goers. So as a result, this is of a normal level of attendance that the pavilion can handle and really approved with the consult of the terms and conditions with the facilities use permit that facilitated this event.
Okay, so this is just for the liquor license. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry, if I could just ask a question on the backup and the letter. Jeannie, it says that this will be placed on the Board of Supervisors on the April 6th. Is that, so is it going to come back April 6th?
Chairman Bishop, Ryan, actually, no. We were going to push this a little further out. However, the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control already has a copy of this license. The event organizer, not realizing what the, all the rules were, went there first. So they're waiting for us to give our either recommended approval or not approval because they're already set to approve it.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve this application for the special event license, along with a caveat, if the coronavirus does spread and get worse, that we recommend that they not have that event.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, going on now to our public hearings. Item number 59, I'd like to open the public hearing for discussion on possible action. Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution Number 2020-017, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, and an amendment to the Desert Hills Fire District Area Plan in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. We don't have any speakers signed up for this item, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Or a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 59 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Supervisor Angus is not here, so it still has a majority vote and passes. Item number 60, open the public hearing. Discussion on possible action. Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution Number 2020-018, a rezone in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. We do not have any speakers signed up for this item, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 60 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, Supervisor Angus is not here to vote. Item number 61, I'll open the public hearing. Discussion on possible action. Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution 2020-028, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, and an amendment to the Desert Hills Fire District Area Plan in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. Once again, we have no speakers. I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 61 be adopted.
Madam Chair, and I second item 61.
Okay. Supervisor Angus is still missing in action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item 62, I'll open the public hearing. Discussion on possible action. Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution 2020-029, a rezone in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. The commission recommended approval with the added condition, the property being zoned C2 for a parking lot. We do have one person signed up to speak on this, Michael O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien, if you'll state your name, you have three minutes.
Say your name and what?
You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind.
Okay.
State your name to start with, please.
Michael P. O'Brien. Good morning. So they want some parking over here, a couple lots, and I think that building has about, for the whole piece of property, 78 people should be able to occupy that building. That includes the employees and everybody. But they have a seating for 150 people. It's not in the building. There's a smoking area for 10 seats. They have 110 seats in that patio area that they're trying to provide parking for, and it's all, the whole building, everything about that building is not in compliance. It should be investigated. I mean, I don't know. I've been working on it for two years. Everybody, they can't seem to see what's going on here. If they get these two more lots, they're going to screw up the rest of the neighborhood because it's, there's a commercial truck going through the neighborhood now that shouldn't be going through that neighborhood. There's a right-of-way in front of that building from State 95, and there's also a subdivision right-of-way there where that delivery truck should stop and deliver, not in front of the people behind it, the residential area, park in front of their house. I mean, I got that picture here. I don't know how to get it up there, but there's an addition on the building that doesn't belong there. There's a letter in 1988 that denied all this stuff here, and it's there today, and there's no permits for it. There's no permit for that room addition. There's no permit for the roof they built on it. There's no permit for that patio. There's no permit for 13 palapas. They had a parking lot on my land, 10 feet in of concrete they poured, and they actually had to park 20 feet in, in some spaces because of, they put in a radius wall, four feet into the utility easement, a 10-foot utility easement, to make that radius wall a drainage easement. And everything's just wrong about this building. Why would you give them two more lots in a residential area when there's a half acre right next to them attached to their property? They could cure their problem with an already-zoned C2 property right next to them. So you screw up a neighborhood, that's just not right. You guys make up your own mind. I don't know what to say anymore.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There are no other speakers signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or motion.
A question for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Someone else?
Excuse me, who are you?
Mike Williams, ma'am. I'm the owner of the property of the restaurant made my wife mend.
Did you sign up to speak?
Well, they said I didn't have to because I'm on the agenda.
Oh, you're the applicant?
I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
Of the restaurant there.
Okay, give me your name again.
I beg your pardon?
Your name again, please.
It's Mike Williams.
Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, that, as you all know, that place is totally all permitted. Everything there is on the general plan, and I have brought them to the county. Scott's here today. I think he'll verify that. I mean, I know I wouldn't be in business if there was no permits. That's kind of common sense, but that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if I close the public hearing or not, but I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or motion.
I still had a question for staff. Mr. Walsh, if we approve this today and they decide to do something other than use it as a parking lot, do they have to come back to us for, either us or to Development Services to change the use of that property?
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Gold, that is correct. One of the conditions that the planning and zoning placed on the rezone is that, excuse me, is that it be used only for a parking lot. So with this rezone, if it's rezoned successfully today and that condition remains, then it would, in order to do anything else with that property, they would have to come back through to have it rezone, to have that condition removed.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Walsh?
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 62 be approved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go on to the regular agenda at this time. Item 63, discussion on possible action. Ray, Mojave County Public Works, Building Fleet Condition Assessment and Recommendation Preliminary Five-Year Facilities Plan for the fiscal years 2020 to 2025.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion, and I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number 64, discussion and possible action. Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution Number 2020-034, accepting Sandview Drive from Parkview Drive to Sandy Point Drive into the Mojave County Regular Maintenance Program as an on-paved road and authorize the placement of stop signs.
Madam Chairman, I had a question for staff on this.
Okay, Mr. Lekowski, I believe Supervisor Gold has a question.
Mr. Lekowski, was the old Standpoint Road in the regular maintenance program?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gold, the establishment of the right-of-way for the, what is now Sandview Drive, represents an alternative routing of Sandy Point Drive, which is in the county's maintenance system. And what that does is enable us to make a connection to Parkview Drive, serving the greater residential area of Meadview Unit 9. So to answer your question, this is actually a new alignment that was established by County Highway by the board. We went through and applied for the right-of-way through BLM because it's an assignment to BLM Federal Lands Right-of-Way, and then we proceeded as part of the transplanting of Joshua trees, actually, which was a requirement that the BLM right-of-way permit, the corridor was opened up in such a manner, the roadway, that it, in its unsurfaced condition, is adequate for staff recommendation to the board for maintenance acceptance.
So ADOT requires the transplantation of Joshua trees?
Supervisor Gold, this would be a BLM requirement. This was a prerequisite to their issuance of the AZA for the federal lands right-of-way granting, with the county being a leaseholder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gold, just to enlighten you a little bit, this has been a really important project for the community, and it's been ongoing for a couple of years now. But the community actually got together and helped the county transplant these trees because they were on BLM property, and it was the agreement that was made. And there's an organization out there called the Friends of the Joshua Trees, and they were quite vocal in their protection of the Joshua trees in that area. So they were transplanted to an area to replace vegetation that had been removed years earlier in an abandoned road.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's been a really exciting project for the community out there, and it solves some issues with flooding that cost the county quite a bit of maintenance money, so... Does anybody else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 64.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number 66, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Malibu Road Improvement District, discussion on possible action ray pursuant to ARS 48-952. Assess and levy the engineering expense, expenses incurred from the design of the Malibu Road Improvement District project that was terminated by the board on February 3rd of 2020. I'll entertain a motion or discussion. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 67, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District, discussion on possible action. Ray approved redevelopment and interconnection of District Well Number Three and Well Number Four sites to complete third production well construction. Furthermore, approve allocation of $350,000 of the $1.2 million identified for a third production well, with $100,000 being allocated towards smart water meters and $250,000 being allocated toward new distribution lines to achieve closed-loop system for efficiency. Okay, I have no one signed up to speak on this. I'll entertain a motion.
I've got a question for staff. Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold and Mr. Lekowski.
Making sure you're ready. In the document, it talks about a closed loop for system efficiency. Can you explain a closed loop to me?
Yes, Madam Chair, Supervisor Gold, as part of the build-out of the Golden Valley Improvement District Water System, and we see this common to small community water systems, it is more of a, I guess, spoken wheel-type build-out where the infrastructure, the water lines take off from the various production wells and storage tanks, which are the backbone of the system, production and delivery. But the water lines are laid out in such a manner, that's why I call it the spoken wheel, where they're not necessarily at their termini connected, and the ability to loop, at least in areas that enable improved service and delivery of water more efficiently, connecting those ends of two water lines could prove advantageous for overall system operations.
So is it an efficiency of the pump operation or an efficiency that you can then valve, if you have a break, you can valve that break off and continue to serve the other people?
And actually, more in the form of definitely on the latter, but then the former efficiency in managing the water storage as well, being able to move water through the system without it being necessarily centralized to a production well or a storage tank, but actually connecting through the loop, looping.
Okay. I think I had another question on that, too. Oh, it talks about smart meters also.
Yes.
The smart meters are, they located where the normal water meter would be?
That's correct. Supervisor Gold, this is merely an exchange of the existing analog water meter. We successfully rolled these out for just the commercial properties at GVID, and they've responded. The meters have performed very, very well. The use of a smart water meter will enable, when it is eventually rolled out, the tracking in virtual real-time of water usage. So if there's a water leak that's noticeable, that can be flagged. It may also allow our customers to monitor their water usage online if those types of parameters are enabled.
And these are far enough, I know we've heard some complaints about smart metering and electrical metering and people that are sensitive to radio frequencies.
Right.
And I'm assuming that these would not be the same problem since they're out in, at the street nearly.
Well, that's the thing.
Rather than right in, next to their power meter in their home.
Supervisor Gold, I can't discount the fact that there still maybe RF signals emitted, but when they are positioned by and large so far away from the residents, you know, one would think that that would not be problematic.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item 67 be adopted.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 68, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District Number One of Mojave County, Arizona. Discussion on possible action. Ray approved the adoption of Resolution Number 2020-02 and accept the owner's request for adjacent property addition to the to the Golden Valley Improvement District Number One. Located at 2515 South Cheroakawa Road in Golden Valley.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I was just curious what the cost is for this property owner to be admitted into the water district.
Okay, Mr. Lekowski.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, with this property being adjacent to the water district, the owner does see some advantages to being a part of the district. However, the owner would have to bear costs of obtaining an unassigned water allocation, which we currently have in excess of about 440 available for sale. I believe the cost for each water allocation is approximately $5,200. It's either $5,200 or $5,250. And then the property owner would be required to pay all requisite fees to connect to the system.
So is there a limited number of those water allocations?
That's correct. Currently, there's an unassigned amount of water allocations that are free for sale to any property owner within the district. So once this property, if the Board were to consider admitting it to the district, this property owner would be eligible to buy one or even multiple water allocations. And there's approximately 440 remaining.
Does that mean that somebody that's already in the district would then not be able to have a water allocation?
Supervisor Gould, when the district was formed, there were water allocations assigned to properties throughout the district. They were assigned based on the property acreage. So some properties actually have multiple allocations, but all did have an allocation at the start. Now, there's been lots split since 1990, a plethora of lot splits, especially in the mid 2000s, that have established dry lots, quite frankly. And those property owners, if and when they so desire, would also be able to buy from the unassigned allocations.
So they were able to split their lot without purchasing an additional water allocation?
Well, they took the master lot, Supervisor Gould, say it was a 20-acre lot that, I'll just say hypothetically, had three allocations, and they may have split it into four parcels. And well, each allocation, as so desired by the person who created the lot split, may have assigned it to three of the four, but then one resulted in a dry lot. So there are lots in the Golden Valley Improvement District currently that are with other water allocations attributed to the lot split over time.
So is that going to cause a problem in the future, then, if someone were to try to build on that, on those lots, and you don't have any more water allocations?
Supervisor Gould, that could present a problem. But right now, as it stands, the water allocations, the unassigned ones, are free for any property owner in the district, including the ones that own dry lots of purchase.
Interesting.
We have not seen significant, any significant movement.
So there's no rush on people buying water allocations?
And there's also no limit. If a property owner desires a purchase, all 400, they are free to do so. It'd be a hefty price tag, but nonetheless.
Interesting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item 69, Discussion and Possible Action, Ray Approve. What was that?
Has left the conference.
Okay, okay. Discussion and Possible Action, Ray Approve Two Tenant Improvement Capital Projects for Mohabe County Assessor's Office at Bullhead City Annex and Mohabe County Assessor's Office at the Lake Havasu Central Complex, and Further Approve Funding for Both Projects as well as Direct Public Works to Procure Agricultural Services for the Mohabe County Assessor's Office Tenant Improvements Projects at the Lake Havasu Central Project Complex. We have no speakers signed up on this. Any discussion or a motion?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Why are these things coming through us now and not put into the next budget year?
Mr. Hendricks, can you answer that?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, we're putting it through now because we had a request from the assessor that you would like to see it addressed and placed before the Board. And I'd also like to point out that this project is being funded through budgeted and unexpended monies and not from a transfer from the general fund or the contingency. Thank you.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, Madam Chair. I understand the money is a savings, but with the report we just got, that's the only reason I was asking that.
And Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, the request from the assessor, it's actually, you know, it came some time ago. And we were redirected because there were some other issues that facilities needed to try to address in relationship to office space in that building. So it's been on our plate a long time. You know, it seemed like it was timely that we brought it before the Board at this time and for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 70, Discussion and Possible Action, Ray Approve Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-041, Supporting the Colorado City Fire District's Grant Application. Supervisor Watson, this is in your area.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Yes, this is another application, following one from last year, for the Colorado City Fire District's application on a proposition to a gaming fund from the Heli Indian Community, and hoping that they get that grant.
Yeah.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 71, Discussion and Possible Action, Ray Require that the Assessor's Office Adhere to the March 1 deadline for Submitting Property Tax Exemption Claim Forms, and That the Board of Supervisors Follow the Process for Redemption of Waiver Forms as Described Under ARS. We have no speakers for this. It was brought to us by Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the backup explained everything. We had a meeting, and we decided that the Board would follow the law. And then I see there was discussion, and our approval from the Board to follow law was being circumvented, so I brought it back to the Board for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Espin, do you have any comments that would help enlighten the Board on this?
I don't know. I really stand by what we said previously a year ago. I reviewed the minutes, and it's, nothing has changed. We want the Board to follow what is stated here in 42-11153. And so, I mean, I'm not opposed to this request. I think that's where we stand. I mean, here's where we are, just kind of the background. The Constitution, the Arizona Constitution provides a number of exemptions for people from paying taxes. But it's not automatic. You have to go through a step, at least not for these class of people. You have to make, file an application. And the initial application and affidavit is filed with the assessor's office. You file that with there. But then it says in 42-11153, it says, "A failure by a taxpayer who is entitled to an exemption to make an affidavit to do that between the first Monday in January and March 1st, that constitutes a waiver." You have waived it. If you did not file it in that period, you have waived the exemption. Then the next step, and this is what Supervisor Johnson is getting at, it says, "If a widow or widower or anyone who, that fills that class of people, submits a petition after the deadline," so after March 1st, "the person or organization may have the waiver redeemed by the Board of Supervisors at any regular meeting." So that's what we're suggesting. That's what I think Supervisor Johnson is suggesting. And that's what, we follow the same thing. That's what we're recommending that you follow.
Okay, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And there was, you know, this issue did come up recently. And I believe what was, what has occurred and what is occurring is that the requests are being assisted by the assessor. And the assessor packages these requests, then places them in front of the Board for a decision. And the consternation came that applicants, people who wanted this waiver, were coming up to the third floor and requesting that the supervisors address and their staff address these issues with them and provide them with the paperwork. And the supervisors weren't prepared to do that, and their people weren't trained to be able to assist, and actually didn't know what was being asked of. So I had a conversation with our attorney's office, and the assessor was kind enough to have a representative there. And my question simply was, can the assessor continue to provide that service, at least for a period of time, and package these requests and place them before the Board? And the assessor agreed to continue to do that. So that's not burdening supervisor staff, or having to retrain supervisor staff. And it still comes, the request still comes before the Board, and I believe that's in accordance with state law, that you make that final decision. That's what's required. So the question becomes, does the Board want the treasurer to continue to provide that service? And she doesn't have to. Or does the Board want their staff to take over that responsibility? Or the Board could just, by order today, stop
Stop.
providing extensions of time after the March 1 deadline. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I have a question for Mr. Espin. Does it matter legally whether we approve on the front end or approve on the back end, as long as the Board is making the approval?
Well, you're not seeing anything if it's between the first Monday in January and March 1. You're not seeing those.
Right.
It's the ones that are afterwards. So that's, so there's not front end or back end. It's only, the only ones you're seeing are the ones that come after March 1. And it is the Board of Supervisors' responsibility to approve or deny those. That isn't anybody else's responsibility.
So if we approve those on the front end, we would have to do the investigation to verify that the requirements are met by the person that's not meeting the deadline?
I guess I'm lost. What do you mean by approving on the front end? I don't understand that, what you're saying with that.
When the applicant first comes to the county and says, "I'm a widow," or whatever the circumstance is, "and I want this exemption," then does the Board of Supervisors, each supervisor has to approve that at that point? Or can we wait until the assessor's office determines that they're eligible and brings it to the Board for our approval on the back end?
Well, an individual supervisor cannot approve it. It's the Board, it's the Board that makes the decision, the collective board that makes the decision. What, I still am following you on the front end part, because there's no approval on the front end. It's given to the assessors between the first Monday in January to March 1. The assessor handles those. Anything after March 1, those have to be presented to the Board of Supervisors.
So what I saw, that was, my office didn't experience this, but Supervisor Watson's did, about six people came up that first day, and they wanted us to help them. And we, we didn't know what to do, because normally, the assessor's office would do that, checking of the documents to make sure that they qualified, package it and put it in front of the Board, and then we would approve it. So if we do it on the front end, as in my terminology is probably incorrect, but on the front end, would be taking that application and verifying that they qualify, packaging it, and then putting it in front of the Board.
Correct.
So each supervisor's office would have a new responsibility to do what the assessor has been doing.
Yes, yes. And I think, I think it's just a matter of those, it'll just take some time to learn, just take some time to learn the process, to figure it out, and then it can go forward. Also, I mean, what we're trying to encourage people to do is to do it between January, 1st of January and March 1. And so hopefully, you would encourage people to say, "Hey, tell your friends and neighbors, put it on your website, whatever, put it in during this time, so we don't have these waivers coming up later." We, I think part of the problem that Supervisor Johnson has with it, and I think is a valid concern, is that we are, we are conditioning people to allow them to submit this after the March 1 deadline, so therefore, it doesn't ever become a deadline.
So if we decide just to make the deadline the deadline, then the applicant would have to wait till the following year, and then they would be eligible at that time, and then we wouldn't have this grace period, per se?
Well, what they would do, if somebody, there would still be an opportunity for that person to bring it after March 1, but it would still, the Board would have to decide whether to accept that or not.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Under some circumstances, say such as a newly widowed person, and they were dealing with an illness and just couldn't get away, whatnot, we still have that opportunity to grant that application after all the forms are completely filled out.
Correct.
It's not the, our responsibility as supervisors to help those people fill the forms out. They must have come in and filled those forms out with the assessor's office before they come to us. I'm pretty sure I'm correct on that. Is that right, Mr. Espin?
Well, I think what Supervisor Johnson is suggesting, that you leave that assessor part out after the March 1.
Right.
After the March 1, it would be, it would be the responsibility of the supervisors to provide the, they would get the form and then present it to the supervisor, and then you would bring it before the Board.
Right, right. And Supervisor Johnson is just in an attempt to clarify and make sure that people understand that that is the cutoff date. And only under special circumstances would it be applicable to come in and talk to your supervisor. That's my understanding.
Yeah, and you provided a good example. Somebody, somebody who recently lost a loved one, they're now widow or widower, and through the process of grieving and trying to figure out funeral arrangements and all this stuff, they missed the deadline, then that would be something that you would probably consider, you know what, we want to wait, we want to, I think, I'm trying to get the exact term, it's, we would, they may redeem the waiver, is what it is.
Madam Chairman, the question is, do you want your staff doing it, or do you want the assessor to process them and bring them in front of the Board? And I think it's important for y'all to know the magnitude of work that's required. Say, if it's for after March 1, then it might not be a big issue. If it's 400, then possibly you would like to continue status quo and have the assessor do it. And from what I'm understanding, unless Ryan, Attorney Espin, wants to correct me, the statute only requires that the issue be determined by the entire Board. So who processes them is, you know, it's kind of up to if the assessor's willing to continue, and if the Board would allow it.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't want to derail or take on any additional responsibilities from my office, but I think the application should come in through the assessor's office. If there is a valid reason, the assessor's office would then contact the supervisor of that district, let that person make the decision to put it on the agenda after all the details and forms are filled out. It's a rather rigorous requirement to put that all together. So that's what I'm trying to get at. My office is not going to be involved in putting these applications together. Only the decision to make is if it was a situation that was egregious enough to make that decision.
Okay, Supervisor Watson, I certainly agree with that analogy. Supervisor Johnson, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe it's the applicant's responsibility to bring in the form that's all filled out with the documentation to show that they are qualified by money and by status. And so there shouldn't be any requirements for us to fill out anything. And so there shouldn't be any requirements for us to fill out anything. By looking at it, we can, we look for the reason why the extension, and obviously the time of the extension, because as we all recall, we get, all year long, we get people asking for it when we could just be saying, you know, "Apply next year. You're only three months away, six months away." It does take corrections with the treasurer and the assessor's office to make if they're late. But that was my only concern was, they would just bring the papers to us that are filled out. You would look at them and ask if, well, "Why are you late on this?" Or, "Is it timely?" And then if the supervisor decided, then they would place it on the agenda. But I just don't think the assessor should be doing these things that aren't required by statute.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Somebody want to make a stab at that motion?
I think it requires action, doesn't it?
Supervisor, I mean, it's Supervisor Johnson's item.
Well, I guess the attorney can, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. Attorney Esplin might be able to say something. I don't know that it takes action. I was just reiterating that we already voted on this item before to make sure that we followed what the board's, the direction was.
Was the board's direction to follow the statute or to prohibit the assessor from filling out the forms or assisting in the filling out the forms?
I think Ryan's going to pull that up right now.
I don't think.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
I think the problem came from that, that people showed up wanting supervisor staff to fill out all the forms for them, and that's where the problem came from. And then it was kind of kicked back to the assessor because the assessor was following the board's direction by saying, "Hey, after this date, we no longer do it. You need to go to the supervisors to individually look at yours to see if it met the requirements of going forward to the board." So if we do nothing, we're back to where we were, where if somebody has a legitimate reason and they bring in their filled out forms and you agree or a supervisor agrees, it can be placed on an agenda.
So, so what you're saying Supervisor Johnson, is each one of these would require the, the information to prove eligibility, then the individual supervisor from that district would place it on the agenda? So if there was 100 of them, would have that many agenda items instead of putting them in a group like the assessors has done in the past?
Madam Chair, I don't believe we have that many. I mean, especially if we decide that we're going to follow the rules and people know that that's when they fill them out. I just don't see this being a problem.
Okay, well, I agree with Supervisor Watson. I, I don't think that we should be filling these forms out and doing the, the investigation, pretty much, and helping them get their forms and everything. I think that's, that's above and beyond what, what my staff would, would be comfortable in doing. But as far as approving that, once, once the, the information is there and we can see that person is eligible, then placing that on the board for the entire board to make a decision on. Correct? Does that sound right, Ryan?
I don't know.
Good answer.
The statutes lay out the process. The process is, if somebody wants to apply for the exemption, they have to do so between March, the first Monday in March to March, or excuse me, the first Monday in January to March 1st. And they do that through the assessor's office. That's clear. That is, that is by statute, that is done in the assessor's office. They approve, they process it, they do that. After March 1st, it says that the person needs to bring a petition to the board for the board's decision, and then the board, then the board of supervisors makes that decision. How you want that process to be brought to you, that's really.
Policy.
It's policy, it's unknown. That's what, that's what the county manager is talking about. That's what Supervisor Johnson is talking about. The main thing that I get out of this is, I want the board to make sure that you're following the law, which you are, by making sure that you guys make the final decision on whether to grant an exemption, whether to, what was the word?
Redeem the waiver.
Redeem the waiver, thank you Supervisor Gould. Redeem the waiver. That's the key that the supervisors have to do. So if you want to have the assessor's office collect the information presented to you, you would direct or ask the, ask the assessor's office to do that for you. But the important point for us is that you make sure that it's the board making that decision, and it's not just rubber stamping it, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, it's Supervisor Johnson's motion. He brought it to the board. I'd like to listen to him one more time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Watson, unless the board, the majority of the board feels they need to change it, I have no motion to make it this time.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Because this, this item came to fruition in my office to a greatest extent, and was, over the course of several days, adding some confusion while I was gone, I think we should make a motion to adhere to the March 1st deadline for submitting property tax exemption claim forms. In the event of an action or event that would restrict or, or somehow make the applicant not able to make the March 1st deadline, they would have to prove to us of such, such an event, such as a death or some other major occurrence, in order for us to then put back on, then put on an agenda item after those, after that information was received, and then convincing a supervisor of that event. But in, but in no way, shape, or form am I willing to put any of our staff offices in charge of trying to put these things together. And I guess my motion is simply to listen here to the March 1st deadline, adhere to ARS 42-11153, as described in Arizona revised statutes, with the understanding that only major complications would be accepted for, for their acceptance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Hold off on the vote. Discussion Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Bear in mind, this is the widowers and widows exemption. So anytime somebody comes to you with this, it's going to be a hardship. So you might want to better define what, what we're going to grant an exemption rather than a general statement.
Actually, I think there are other exemptions besides just widowers and.
Chairman Bishop, if I can piggyback on Supervisor Gould's comments, I think he makes a valid point. It's a widower, widower, as well as persons with disability, and then also organizations that are exempt from federal income tax, so nonprofits and things. So there's other ones as well. There's always going to usually be a hardship of some kind. What I would suggest is, I don't know, it's a moving target. I'm just trying to throw this out there, but I would suggest withdrawing the motion. Supervisor Johnson has indicated that no action is necessary, and that we follow through with how we're doing it, but keep in mind that in the future, that this board will be much more circumspect and much more discriminant in terms of who gets, which, which exemptions, which redemptions of waivers are granted, given that we want to make sure that it's done properly. So it was a good, basically it was a good discussion, but take no action today.
We're sympathetic for people that have cause, but if it's just out of laziness or.
Yeah.
Or forgetfulness, we're not going to accept those.
Well, that'd be up to you to decide. That's for the board to decide.
I'll withdraw my motion. Did that help?
And if I could ask Supervisor Johnson, what do you think about that?
Madam Chair, Attorney Esplin, does that mean we're going to stick with the motion that was made before, that the board will only accept them?
Well, the, what was accepted before, I looked at the minutes, and the board did not accept anything before. What the board discussed was to follow your idea, but ultimately, the vote at that time was to approve, was to grant the redemptions, was to redeem the waivers. That's what happened back in, in last year, May of 2019.
Correct, but then we said we will follow the state deadline and that the assessor would no longer be submitting them. They'd have to be submitted by supervisors. And I understand what Supervisor Watson is saying about additional work, but I believe, just like with planning and zoning issues and those things, they all have to bring in completed paperwork. Anybody coming in should bring in completed paperwork. And to address Supervisor Gould's thoughts about deadlines and hardships, there's a deadline set by the state, and it has to do with taxation and assessments and, and all those things, and budgets and everything, not that there's that many people that, that apply. But if we have a deadline, we, we need to adhere to the deadline. I mean, rules are rules, and, and we still can make exceptions, like Supervisor Watson said, with extreme circumstances, but it just seemed to be getting carried away over the last few years with things coming in six months after the March deadline.
So I think the question is, do you want the assessor to continue to process that paperwork and then give it to, give it to you? Which, which you could. You can delegate that to the assessor to do that, not delegating your authority to grant, to redeem the waivers. Or do you want it to come through your offices, as Supervisor Johnson is suggesting?
Well, yes. And the reason for that is, most of the base information lies in the assessor's office.
So you would rather go through the assessor's office and they present it to your, to your office?
Yeah. Yes. Have the assessor's office perform the function of inspecting those documents. That person, after succeeding through the assessor's office, then can go to their supervisor, whichever district in which they live, and make an appeal and say, "Look, I was in the hospital for three months and I just couldn't get out and do it." That would be, to me, an acceptable explanation. If you just forgot about it, then good luck, you can do it next year. That's, that's my position. I'm not going to have my staff filling out paperwork for people that were too lazy to come in and get it done prior to March 1st. We are willing to make that exemption for those folks that were absolutely unable to do it. And that's my position.
We have the assessors here. I don't want to step on any toes, but.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, just so you know, Assessor Kent is at the podium, ready to answer questions, but go ahead.
Okay, I guess my, my question to Attorney Esplin is, are there any legal requirements as far as assessor staff filling out these forms? Are we doing legal paperwork for other people that we could get in trouble with? I mean, I understand the assessor's office, I don't know if they have or have not been filling out forms, and you always want to help everybody out by saying, "Yeah, you need to have this done and that done." But I didn't understand that we were actually filling out the forms. I thought they had to bring in all their documentation with the form filled out.
Well, I think they are. I don't, I don't think the assessor's doing the paperwork for them. They don't have the time and energy, manpower, you name it, to do all that paperwork. They're the ones that are providing the paperwork. They provide it to the assessor. The assessor's office may then say, "Well, you missed, you missed a spot here, you need to fill this one here," or whatever. And that's not giving legal advice, but I think what they're doing is, they're doing the paperwork, giving it to the assessor. And what it could be is, do the paperwork, give it to the assessor, the assessor make sure that those, those lines have been filled out, and then forward it on to the supervisors. We could do that.
Well, Madam Chairman, that's really, that begs the question is, if we're going to, if we're going to lay out a procedure where the supervisor, or the assessor is going to assist with the paperwork or collect the paperwork, who puts it on the agenda? Should it then go to the supervisor of the district that the, the person resides in?
I think that's.
Then they place it on the agenda, because I believe they're just coming from the, the assessor now.
Yeah, and I think that's what Supervisor Johnson would advocate more, is that, is the one that you're suggesting, or not suggesting, that you're saying is a, is a possibility where the assessors gather the information, they don't fill out the paperwork, they just collect it, and then pass it on to the district, to the specific supervisor, and then the supervisor puts it on the agenda. I think Supervisor Johnson would like that method.
Well, then I would, we should set that as our policy. Madam Chairman, one question, I, could I ask for one clarification?
Yes.
And I, I know it's incredibly important to hear from the assessor, but if, if the paperwork came to any individual supervisor, that supervisor could not make a decision on whether to place that on the agenda or not, because Ryan just told us in reading the statute, this is my question, Ryan, that it's the decision on whether to do the extension is a board decision, it's not an individual supervisor's decision. So all you would be doing by having her, the assessor, bring those items to the individual supervisors, is you would be creating that board action form for each item so that the rest of the board could hear it, instead of the assessor creating that board item and placing it in front of you to make a business decision on whether to do the redemption. See what I'm saying?
I do.
Right, so each supervisor would have an agenda item.
Would be placing a supervisor in a, in a contentious, precarious situation of denying something they have no authority to deny.
No, that's, no, that's not what I'm saying. No, if you give it to the supervisor, the supervisor then can say, "Okay, we're going to put this on the agenda, but I don't think this should go. I don't think, I'm not going to agree with this. I'm not, you're not put in that position at all. You're just, they're putting it on the agenda." And it'd be, it'd come upon each one of the supervisors to determine, "Yeah, I think that's a good idea. That's a good reason. So I'm going to, I'm going to put this on the agenda and I'm going to recommend approval." Or you would put it on the agenda and say, "I'm, I'm not going to recommend approval."
Right. If I could, and I agree with that. Let the supervisor of that district make the decision on whether the event that made that person not able to, to hit the deadline, make that decision. If it's a, it's a weak explanation, wait till next year. If there's something that really is an event that precluded them to be able to come and fill out the application prior to March 1st, then let the supervisor make that decision and then fill out the form and, and put it on the agendas. That's, that's not onerous for, for my staff.
Well, I think though, I think it would have to go on the agenda whether you agree or not.
Yes, it would have to go on the agenda, but.
But you would tell them, you could tell them and say, "No, I'm not going to support this, but I'm going to put it on the agenda."
Well, you could even say, "I'm not going to put it on the agenda."
I don't think you could do that, though. Because it says, it says, the, submits a petition after the deadline. So I think when you submit a petition, I think it's got to go in front of the supervisors.
Madam Chairman.
Okay, well, it's pretty simple. I'll put it on the agenda, but I'm not going to vote for it, and I doubt if my cohorts will.
And you, and you can do that. And that's perfectly acceptable, absolutely, yeah.
Supervisor Gould.
Madam Chairman, I know you guys enjoy when I refer to, in the legislature.
Don't say that.
But in the legislature, we had a committee system, and the committee system, you actually, you made a recommendation to the, to the full senator, to the full house, and the rec, you sent things, it either says with a "do pass" recommendation or a "do not pass" recommendation. So that, essentially, that would be, the supervisor would then be making, making a recommendation. But I'm betting.
We don't have to say "do pass."
I'm betting most of these come with a "do pass" recommendation, just being a politician.
I can see making a recommendation, but the "do pass," that seems a little weird.
Madam Chair?
I'm not in the legislation. Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I guess with the discussion that's going on, the way it comes to us now, the, the assessor submits a list and there's no explanation. And so I think the way we're looking at doing it going forward, we would have the reasons, like Supervisor Watson said, so we can make a decision as to, you know, if it's timely, you know, if it's late in the year, or if it's going to make problems for our treasurer and assessor, or if it's just somebody's lack of doing their due diligence. At least then, we would have some way to make a decision. Prior, the assessor just submits the forms and says they. Prior, the assessor just submits the forms and says they qualify without the reason why they were late. So I think it'll just be more openness for all of us.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Johnson. I agree with that.
Chairman, I think the assessor wanted to speak if we could.
Madam Chair, board, thank you for having this on the agenda Supervisor Johnson. Yes, I agree with what all of you are saying actually, and I'm trying to, the whole process was to try to give you less work. Also, we were enabling applicants for years. One of the reasons was, is because I didn't know about the program. Well, since I've been here, we tell everybody about the program. I talk about the program. I write about the program. I'm on the radio about the program. So they can't really say I didn't know about it. It's in our book about our programs. So with that, in the last three to four years, that's what we've done diligently, went to the board last year to hope to, we can get this, you know, verified as to how we're going to run it. As far as the other counties in the state, I'd say more than half cut it off March 1st and that's it. So we are very generous to allow someone to come in and say, "My husband passed away and I didn't know I was in the hospital." Of course, we all have big hearts. We would love to do that. "But my dog ate my application, it's not good enough." And that's where we're trying to weed that in to make it less work for you. And then that way the taxpayers know March 1st is the deadline. Please get it at March 1st. So I think that it will change as time goes and this is our first year and I apologize for the confusion.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kench.
Somebody want, I mean.
I'll take a stab at it.
Thank you Supervisor Gould.
Madam Chairman, I move that the board's policy on the redeeming of widows and widowers and the other associated people with this exemption, that the applicant meet with the assessor and that the assessor forwards the completed paperwork to the supervisor of the district that that person resides in to be placed on the board of supervisors' agenda.
Very well put. I think you got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think get a second, I'm in.
Sure.
Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item number 72, discussion of possible action, may approve the recommendation of the county manager to appoint Travis Lincolnfelter as the Mojave County procurement director. We don't have any speakers on this item. I'll open it up for discussion.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the county manager to appoint Travis Lincolnfelter as Mojave County procurement director at range 29 between steps five and six at $102,000 annually or $49.40 an hour. The reason for my approval on this was based on previous performance here in Mojave County. Mr. Lincolnfelter worked here for a number of years as the director of procurement, did an excellent job and brought that department up from one that was lacking to one that was performing in an excellent manner and receiving a number of awards. I'd also like to say that Mr. Lincolnfelter did a nice job in his other work here with Mojave County as economic development director. I believe he's probably the very best candidate out of the 10 that were looked at. And with that, I show my support for Mr. Lincolnfelter.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, Mr. Lincolnfelter is here in the audience. If anybody has any questions of him or if there's any discussion, I'll open that up to the floor. Supervisor Angus.
I don't know if you're going to do a roll call vote because I'd like to explain my vote now if you're not going to do that.
I'll be doing a roll call vote, but you can go ahead and explain if you want.
Okay, well, as I says, I do want to explain my vote. I believe a director position like this at such a high starting salary should have a candidate who has been in the procurement field within the last 10 years, within a whole decade. So my vote will be no.
Okay, under discussion, I do have concerns with the salary and I've voiced those concerns already. So and you're right, the experience having a wide gap is a concern as well. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No ma'am.
What did he say?
He said, "No ma'am."
Okay, so I'll call for the.
You don't have a second.
No second. Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion. I need a second. Supervisor Johnson, do you wish to second the motion?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second the motion just so that we can have the vote.
Thank you.
So we'll do a roll call, Jenny, please.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Okay, I would like to, in this meeting, by calling the attention of the fact that amid the coronavirus outbreak around the globe, we will be holding an emergency meeting today at 2:00 PM pursuant to ARS 38431-02D and J. Please refer to the notice posted on the county website for the description of that meeting. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Adjourned.